Good evening. We have all board members present this evening to have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. By Lee, second. By Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have on the proposed levy presentation tonight by our Director of Finance, Julie Sink.
Good evening, Board Chair and Board Members. Dr. Groover. Tonight, we will start with our levy certification. As you know, we started this process last summer already, working through all the formulas that it takes to put together the levy. And the Board approved a preliminary levy in September. And now, we're talking about the final levy approval tonight. We will go through the tax levy calendar, some basic school funding, the factors contributing to the levy change, some, the actual certification itself, and some graphical analysis. As you know, the school district tax levy is set by state formula or voter-approved for the most part. As we go through the calculations, I'll show you some of the graphs of how that is separated out. So, we find out what our authorized total revenue is and subtract out the local property taxes, and the rest is our state aid. Just want to talk a little bit about our referendum market analysis, and I will also talk about our tax capacity. As you know, the past several years, both of those market, our referendum market value and our tax capacity haven't been going down. And we do finally see the rebound this year, coming back up, and that also reflects the change in the economy. So, we see some growth here in 2013 in our referendum market value, and then we see a little bit more growth in the overall adjusted net tax capacity of our school district. Some factors impacting this tax change. We have different, there are issues that are driven by the state level, so our legislators make changes to our levies. There are issues that are determined by our district voters, so when we have a referendum or we may have building needs, we go to our voters to approve those, and we also have local factors. And those issues that are determined by the state level are usually changes in the state formula, changes in the sales value ratio, which impact our adjusted net tax capacity, and then any laws mandating code compliance. And I put health and safety out there, and those are usually things like if we have to have asbestos removal, that comes through our levy certification. And then, most local factors, as we've seen, our real estate market, that inflationary pressure, any abatements that we may have, or property improvements that have not previously been taxed. So, as we are a growing district, new homes get built. It takes a couple of years for those homes to become, to be on our tax rolls. So, it takes a couple of years for that. Changes in individual assessed market values, so as the county assesses homes and individual businesses, that affects our levy certification. And then, any changes in classification. So, if it goes from homestead, and we have parcels being developed, those affect that as well. What is included in our levy certification? Like I said before, levies and our bonds that are voter-approved, those levies set by state formula, our equity, we get a little bit more equity this year than we have in the past, operating capital, transition, and community service. Our student population drives quite a bit of these formulas. And so, as our student population and our residential population go up, that drives those formulas as to how much revenue we get from those levies. And then, we have some levies authorized by, based on local needs, such as reemployment, our Safe Schools Levy, which we know that we utilize for our school resource officers in our schools, our career and technical, health and safety facility leases, our integration, Q Comp, OPEB, and deferred maintenance. As you, I've shown you in the graphs, our adjusted net tax capacity has increased 9.2% and our referendum market value is very close to that at 9.7%. And we do have an increase in our total pupil units for our district. We always talk about our OPEB because this was something new about three or four years ago, and so, that's based on the actual costs of our retiree insurance for 1314, and that's about $421,000. So, we have requested that amount in our levy certification for our Pay 15 levy, and there is a total OPEB levy cap, but there isn't appropriation at this time for that. And here's the graph that shows our percent that is used for our voter-approved and what percentages our overall levy is. 65% of our overall levy is based on our voter-approved, the referendums, excess operating referendums, and our building bonds. So, that's 65% of our overall levy. The state determines about 13%, and then, the local discretion is 22. And that's gone up a little bit simply because of some changes in legislation and has allowed additional local discretion. And I do have this list, it hasn't changed a whole lot, but it does go through each of the components of our levy certification. That local optional is the newest piece of that, where we, that is where the local discretion comes into play, that we are able to utilize $424 of our operating referendum is now based on local optional aid. And that was a change in the legislature. So, that shows, that has increased simply because we have a larger student population. And we received some additional equity because of the same rationale. We have additional students, that equity has gone up. And as you can see, as you go through the list, and I'm not going to go through each of them, but some of them have gone up and some have gone down due to various factors. Our health and safety has gone down because we finished with quite a few of those projects that we had during our deferred, we've done quite a few projects in deferred maintenance. So, that has gone down. But we have seen an overall increase just in the general fund levy of 1.15%. And like I said, a lot of that is driven by student population. If we look at our other pieces, community service makes up the other parts of our levy certification, and that's based on our population and in our entire district, and that actually has decreased 1.31%, and again, because of some changes in the formulas. And our debt service fund has gone up slightly at 2.25%. And you can see the reduction in debt excess. That's, we are required to levy 1.05% for our debt service, and so that if there's any unpaid debt at the time, that we have a little extra in our fund balance. But if we have more than that 5%, we actually are showing us giving that back to our taxpayers in that negative amount. So, it's almost $300,000 this year. And as we go through each year, we look at that and make sure that we're not having that stay in our fund balance, we're actually giving it back to our taxpayers. So, if we look at our overall preliminary levy summary, we are showing an overall 1.6% increase in our levy certification for this year. If you want to see what that looks like compared to previous years, we have a five-year levy history. If you look back to 2010, Pay 11, we had a levy certification of almost $26 million. And it's gone down a couple of years, and now, we're looking, we're still have a lower tax levy than we did five years ago. So, even though we're up a little bit this year, it still is very consistent with what we've done in the past, we're just up slightly this year. And I did want to show a little bit about the impact of our school levy in the city property of Prior Lake. This information I received from Scott County. The average home value is $268,000. And as you can see, there isn't a change. If you had no change in value, you're actually seeing a decrease in your levy certification from the school district. It's only until you get over 10% that you're going to see an increase in your levy certification based on the school's levy. And the same holds true for the city of Savage. Their home value is slightly less at 231,000, but again, until it's over 11%, there's, you'll see a decrease in your levy from the school district. And only about 13% to 20% of the population is going to see an increase, simply because their valuation of their home has gone up that amount. Any questions concerning that?
Any questions?
Okay.
Done for you.
Thank you.
Move on to the public comment portion of the evening. Any public member would like to address the Board regarding the levy? Yes. Yes, if you'll come up and state your name and city that you're in.
My name's Roxanne Clinchway, and I live in Prior Lake. A few years ago, my husband passed away, and I thought, you know, after a while, that there's no way I could afford living in the four-level split quarter-acre home. And I thought, what a great place to move to, Prior Lake. And so, I bought a brand-new townhouse, much smaller, a small piece of land, not anywhere near the value of the house I left behind. Well, when I got my tax notice, I about fell off the chair. 75% increase in what my normal taxes would be, and I really don't think it's right that I should be paying $3,100 a year for taxes, including 16, almost 1,700 of it is for tax levies. And so, my question is twofold. Number one, it's outrageous, but number two, how, how is the rest of this going to pan out? Next year, is this levy going to spill over into 2016 and then into 2017? I realize that there was a vote, unfortunately, I missed it because I moved into my home in October last year, but I really need to know what to do because, quite frankly, I feel it's a very unfriendly city right now, and I'm actually thinking about selling and moving. That's a lot of money. I can't afford it. And I can't be alone in this. Seriously. $1,800 in regular taxes and another $1,600 in levies? No. Not right. So, I'd like to know what the plan is in the future for future levies? And is this just the tip of the iceberg, or is there more coming?
As you know, our school district is different than cities and counties in that we're unable to just levy because we want to levy. We levy because, simply because the legislature allows us to levy for different formulas that they require us to levy for, and it's voter-approved. So, 65% of your, what the school portion of your levy is, is based on voter-approved, and that happens, the last voter vote that the district had was in 2009 for an excess levy referendum, which will be up again in 2018. The last building was before that in 2007. I wasn't here at the time.
Five.
2005. And those typically are 20-year bonds, and so, as they run out, then those come off the tax rolls. And so, those are the only ways. It's not like, the cities and counties, they do have the ability to levy without any voter approval or any, and I shouldn't say any, because they do have some stipulations of which they have regulations, but most of the time, ours is based on legislative or voter-approved.
And so, the voter-approved, do they know how much it was going to affect them?
Yes.
So, $1,700 increase is, was apparently okay with people. I mean, this is, I just think it's outrageous. I think it's really.
Well, has your taxes increased to $1,700, or that's the total amount?
No, it would have been 1,800. It's increased by another 1,700 to a total of $3,100 on my measly little townhouse that's worth about $240,000.
And I would have to really look at your individual, which I'd be happy to, of which portion the school district has of that increase.
Well, as you can understand how upset I am, this is not right.
Your total taxes are comprised of county, city.
I understand that. I've got it right here. I've got the breakdown right here. I understand it. This part is $1,657.71. That's more than my whole taxes and everything that were paid where I used to live. And now, I'm up to $3,100. That is not citizen-friendly. I am sorry. That is so wrong. You're going to, you're going to scare people away to come into this, this pretty town, this beautiful town. This is just not right.
Thank you. If you'd like to meet with Julie, either now or afterwards, you can explain the portion of it that is the district's responsibility?
It's not going to change anything, though, right?
No.
It is what it is. And I didn't get an answer, actually, on what's going to happen. Is this part of a total levy, or is there going to be more of it coming into the following year?
This is what the district's total levy is at this time. Next year, the Board will reevaluate that and look at it again. As you've seen over the past five years, our levy's actually gone down less than what it was in prior years, and so...
We, as a Board, have dropped the levy every year, down 0.1% in '11. In '12, it was down 2.75%. In '13, it was down 1 point, I'm sorry, 0.15%. Last year, down 0.35%. So, we've actually decreased over the years here in this district. So, and that, and then, the increase that you see this year is actually an increase only because the taxing body is greater. It's not that the individuals, and Julie can go back to the pre-lex line, but the individual homeowners who have had no increase in their home value, and does it show an increase on your statement? Mine did, of your home value?
I bought the home last October, so I don't have the history here to compare it to. All I know is that when I moved in, I checked to see what my taxes would be, and they said it would be about 1,800, which is actually correct. It did turn out to be about 1,800. But what I didn't know is that I was going to be slapped with an additional 75% or an additional 1,600-plus. Almost doubled it. So, unfortunately, I was not aware of that. And that's a lot of money, you know?
If you give Julie a minute, she'll step out and talk with me about it and show you what is our, our portion. Have other members of the community who'd like to address this?
Good afternoon. Tim Connery.
Casey Parkway.
Continuing where she left off, my house went up 6.4%. Now, the tax man this morning told me the value of my house has nothing to do with the tax the school is asking for. Whether the house goes up or down, they come and get their money no matter what they want. They're going to get it. So, whether my house was worth 257.3, which is only worth 229 because of what the house across the street sells for, doesn't matter. The house constantly ebb and flows, up and down. The Scott County wants their extra money, they're coming for 4% next year. You guys are coming after 1.5 this year.
1.5 as a, as a net amount, however...
I was coming from work, so I missed the whole presentation.
Yeah.
All I know is, like she said, when is enough, enough? They approved a levy, you guys do a lot of this in the wintertime, I'm not available to make it due to my job. The problem I have is, when is enough, enough? And you said it has gone down. My, my tax has been consistently the same for the school levy. It maybe goes down $30, $22, but everything else goes up on the other side. And as she says, how does, how does this happen for people that don't have a steady job or are making car payments? I'm driving a 14-year-old car. I have no kids. I have no kids in school. When is the breaking point for these elderly people that are living in smaller houses on a budget? I like the fact we have a nice town, we have nice things, but where does it stop? Where we still, still need to educate the children and not have these fancy fields, classrooms, technology? We need to be sharper, but also save the money. So, when's enough, enough, is all I'm asking. If you could talk to her.
She will show you the form of this portion and then what has changed yet, yeah, from that. If you're in Prior Lake, there is a separate slide for Prior Lake.
Well, and that was another thing, you know, after the mayor, I read that in Saturday's paper, what he said, I, he thinks we should be paying 10%. I, I don't know where, I don't have a big enough money tree.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the community? Seeing none, we'll move on. On the consent agenda, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as outlined.
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have the standard resolution of gifts as followed. We have a motion to accept the gifts as listed in your Board pack.
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Lee. Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Thank you. Tonight, Laker Pride, we have the, by state participants of our groups of students, is Beth Fuller? I didn't see Beth here yet. Oh, she is hiding back there, behind Dan. Yeah, Beth, Beth, if you want to come up here, and if we could have the boys cross-country Okay. Yep, he did bring it up. Okay. Here you go, Beth.
We'd like to congratulate the boys cross-country team on their fine finish. The details will be later on in the presentation on fall activities, but they had their best finish since 1993. Ben Garrison, Sean Doherty, and Carter Genrick. Congrats.
As they're making their way up here, these two young ladies did a fantastic job for their team all season and really turned it on at the section meet and finished in the qualifying top. So, awesome job. Bright future for these two.
Football, again, had another great season, headed to state, great finish. Tonight, representing their four captains are two of their captains, Eric Doles and Josh Distey. Great season. These ladies were section champs and had a fantastic finish to their season as well. If we could give a big round of applause for Rachel Kleist and Trish Bachmeier. All the details and highlights will be coming later on in the presentation for those of And girls' tennis captains, please join us at the front. They've been champions for several years in a row, so they are probably still practicing. We'll congratulate Allison Wagner, Danny Keller, and Chloe Hall.
If anyone would like to address the Board on something that's not on the agenda, please join us. Seeing none, we'll move on. Personnel Adams, Matt?
Good evening. First up, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment and am seeking Board approval.
I have a motion to accept the candidates as listed in your Board pack.
So made.
By Stacy, second. By Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence and am seeking Board approval.
I have a motion to accept the leave of absences.
So moved.
By Lee, second.
Second.
By Stacy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have one district retirement.
Indeed, we do. And Mark Borkert will be retiring. He's been working for the district for 22 years, and I would just like to say a personal thank you to, to Mark because I know that he's been an outstanding member of this staff, and he's brought a lot to the culture of the district over his time with us. So, thanks, and I present the retirement.
I have a motion to accept Mark Borkert's retirement.
So moved.
By Dan, second.
I'll second the motion.
By Rich, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero.
And next, on behalf of the Educational Support Staff Negotiations Committee, I present the terms, the collective bargaining agreement for the secretaries group, the Prior Lake-Savage Area Secretaries Federation. And just a quick note there, too, I just wanted to say thank you from the representatives from the PLSSF. They were great to work with in this round of negotiations, and we built on a tradition of having very successful negotiations in these past three rounds. So, that's been great to see and a really nice group to work with. So, my thanks for the process. So, my thanks for the process.
I have a motion to accept the agreement with the secretaries.
I will make that motion.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Carries six zero one.
And next up is a staffing request, and this staffing request is twofold. First off, we are requesting a paraprofessional to assist in a kindergarten classroom at Westwood. We've simply reached that threshold that we've discussed in the past where we've gotten unfriendly student numbers in that particular classroom and need additional assistance there. And then, there's a number of food services requests here. These requests are based off of temporary additions that have needed to be made throughout this year as we've introduced the new elementary kindergarten breakfast. And so, at the elementary level, these additions are being added in order to serve that breakfast, which is a new service that's being, that was introduced this year. And then, the last piece of that is at the middle schools. We've seen lunch counts and also the number of students between the two middle schools equalize over time, and there was a staffing discrepancy there, and it was difficult to provide the same quality of service at Twin Oaks Middle School. And so, there's also a request here to see a, an addition in that kitchen.
I have a motion to accept the additional staffing request.
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have one item left in the old business, the World's Best Workforce Plan. Ms. Jenke.
Good evening, Chair Sorensen, members of the board, Dr. Grover. I'm here this evening seeking board approval for our district World's Best Workforce Plan. This plan was presented last week at the data retreat and again with the community forum also. I'm prepared to go through the presentation or answer any questions and ultimately seeking board approval for our plan.
Any questions about the plan or does anyone need to review it a second or third time? Did a nice job on the plan. It was very enlightening.
Thank you.
But I don't think we need to see it again.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Any questions about it? Anyone catch anything? With that, I have a motion to accept the plan is lined out.
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second.
I'll second it.
By Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the demographics report.
Good evening. I'm Ann Thomas representing schoolfinances.com. I'm pleased to be with you tonight. The other gentleman that worked with me on the study are Todd Netzke and Jim Sheehan, and I'm representing all this evening. So, again, thank you for giving us the chance to work with your district. We were contacted in September by Ms. Sink who talked about some planning that was going on in the district and talking about planning for the next five years and wanting someone to kind of look over your shoulder and make sure that we were seeing something similar to what you were seeing and to help you develop enrollment projections. And so, we agreed to do that and developed a report and some projections for you. So tonight, I would just like to quickly review some of the work that we did, share some key observations, and then the projections that we developed. So, to do the work for the study, we did a number of things. We developed a demographic profile of your school district that details the population from several points in time, from 2000, from 2010, with estimates for 2013 and what's being projected for 2018. And it looks at the population by gender, by ethnicity, by age. It gives us details about the number of homes in your district, how many of them have school-aged children, what the educational attainment of the citizenry is, just a whole host of information to help us look at how population is anticipated to increase in the next five years. We provided a supplement to the report that we provided to Ms. Sink called the Census Geographic Report, which details all that information. And again, we reviewed that information as we thought about projecting enrollment. Then we looked at development trends. We wanted to know what was happening in terms of residential development, economic development, how homes were selling, just general information about development. And along with that, I did a number of interviews. I interviewed Dr. Grover, I interviewed Ms. Sink, I talked with representatives from the non-public schools in your districts, I talked with people at the cities of both Prior Lake and Savage as well as Scott County. Again, just to make sure that they weren't planning things that we were not aware of that would have implications for your enrollment. So, that was part of the review that we did as well. We studied your enrollment history very carefully because all projection methodologies have a foundation in understanding enrollment history, believing that by understanding what's happened, it gives you insight into what trends have occurred, what may or may not occur, so that you can then develop effective projections. And so, we spent a lot of time looking at your history, along with looking at birth trends. We grabbed data from the Minnesota Health Department, looking at the numbers of children who have been born in the zip code served by your district as well as the county to help us identify what the kindergarten projection might be. And then finally, looked at all that data and developed some projections for you. So again, I just want to share some of the observations that we made from some of the key data that we looked at. So, the first thing that, the first slide that you're looking at is just a graph of population for your school district. Now, this is not, this is not population for Prior Lake, it's not population for Savage, but it's, again, because we're able to define your district, this is the population that's anticipated to be projected in 2018. And so, currently, in 2013, the estimates are about thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty. The projections indicate that your district is going to grow about 1.96% annually or about 750 residents each year. Then we looked at the youth population. That is the children in your district between the ages of zero and eighteen. Again, at the points in time of 2010, thirteen, and 2018. And from 2013 to 2018, we anticipate the children ages zero to nine, the population is actually going to decline slightly, but the population of children in your district between the ages of ten and eighteen is going to grow. Then we looked at the percentage of women in your school district who are of childbearing years, that is between the ages of eighteen and forty-four. And on this graph that you're seeing on the left presents the data for your district in 2013 with 2018 projections, and on the right, it shows that same data for the state. And so, basically, in 2013, about a third of the women in your district were of childbearing age. That's going to decline just ever so slightly in 2018. Then we looked at the percentage of households in your district that have school-aged children. And in 2013 and in 2018, the majority of homes in your district, over fifty percent, have school-aged child, children. Then, looking at some development trends, this graph looks at the history of building permits issued by the municipalities and the townships in your school district. And we see that for Prior Lake and Savage, and this data is only through September, but we see that the number of building permits declined slightly in 2014. However, both cities are poised for growth with Savage in particular having more planned development in the next three years. This next graph looks, details the real estate sales in your district from 2010 through 2014. Again, this is data only through September. An annual average of four hundred and thirty-nine single-family homes have sold in your district during this time period, and this year, the average selling price of homes was three hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Then, looking a little more deeply at your enrollment history, so this is a graph that shows the enrollment change that's occurred in your district in the last six years, and it's been positive. So you've grown every year. On average, you've increased one hundred and sixteen students each year during this And then to understand a little bit more about your history, this table shows the total migration. That is how students, how the grades move year to year, how students move through grades in your district. And so, there are two reasons for an enrollment change in a school district. One is the difference between the students who graduate in the spring and the entering kindergarten classes that fall. The other reason for enrollment change is the in and out migration of all other grades. And your history is interesting because initially, you, the kindergarten students, the kindergarten class each fall is smaller than the graduating class the previous spring. However, you pick up students every, in grades one through nine and have for the last five years, on average, two hundred and twenty-seven students. So that by the time the students in kindergarten are in high school, the classes are larger, much larger, and a lot of that, again, you're picking up lots of students, the lion's share of it comes in grade nine when your non-publics stop, and those students typically come to The other thing to note about this, the difference in grades, the drop in grades eleven and twelve in your case, I know speaks to the number of students that you have that are enrolled in post-secondary enrollment options, and so that's why those numbers are, appear as they are. The next graph looks at the difference between your resident students who enroll out and non-resident students enroll in. And over the time from 2008, 2009 through the most recent data in 1314, this has changed from a negative to a positive, and this just speaks to the attractiveness of your district. This next table is a, is a table that compares capture rate. And the capture rate is just a way of saying what percentage of resident students stay in their resident district to be educated. And so, we have your district with the, with some districts that I think you like to compare yourself with. The average capture rate of this group is eighty-nine point four percent. You're eighty-eight point four percent, so maybe just slightly below, but definitely in the zone. This graph looks at Aspen Academy and shows from 2008, 2009 through 1314, the black bars, their change in enrollment. The red bar presents the portion of it that is Prior Lake-Savage students. And so, it's about seventy percent of their enrollment is, are students from your district. It's important to note with this graph, in 2008, 2009, Aspen was only K through three. And so, as they've added grades each year, typically, these are, these are students that, once they've started, they, they stay at Aspen and, until the program of study is finished in grade eight. So again, these are not new students every year, this is the, some of the same students that are just following through the program of study. This graph looks at the non-public enrollment in your school district, and you have three non-publics, St. Michael's Catholic, Prior Lake Christian, and St. Paul's Lutheran. Their enrollment peaked in 2005 and has declined since. At this time, none of the three schools are planning to expand facilities or add grades or change their program, and so, we would not expect the, their enrollment has declined, and we, we don't see any reason that it's, it's going to do anything but continue kind of to be stable or maybe decline slightly. Then finally, birthday that'd help us decide about kindergarten. So this is just a line graph that looks at the births served, excuse me, births in the zip codes served by your district from 2000. And this is very comparable, it is exactly to the state of Minnesota. Birth peaked in 2007 and really haven't come back to that level since. It's also, in 2013, the births in the zip codes served by your district were lowest, the lowest they've been since 2001. And again, that's a national trend as well. I read an article last week in the Los Angeles Times that nationally, last year's birth rate was the lowest that it's been in this time period, and they're attributing it to women just delaying childbearing until later. So with that, we thought about a number of planning scenarios for you and came up with three options to look at how you might plan for enrollment. We chose a low-growth, a moderate-growth, and a high-growth method with growth ranging from seventy-eight students, if you, if you like the low-growth method, to eight hundred and ninety-two students for the high-growth method in five, in the next five years. We, the study team could not, you are a high-performing district both academically and extracurricularly. You're a desirable district. Everybody we talked to had nothing but good things to say about us. We could not find any reason to, any, any method we looked at that would project anything other than increasing enrollment. So, again, those are, those are the three different scenarios, and you can have some internal discussion and decide how you'd like to move forward. With that, some recommendations. The first one is that this data, these projections are based on the conditions that are existing right now. The birth rate that we've seen, the housing development, the economy, all of these things play a factor. And so, as those things change, they influence enrollment. And so, it's vitally important that you monitor this annually, review what's happened, consider your assumptions, are they following what you thought they were going to be? Has the birth rate changed? Just very carefully consider it because it's all based on this point in time. The other recommendation, I think you do have some kind of a group process for projecting enrollment, which is great. We would encourage you to continue to do that, to again, review the enrollment that's been realized, look at your assumptions. Just together, you'll come up with a better product, and also, during the process, you foster understanding of enrollment in general. So with that, I would be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
What differentiates the high-growth rate from the low-growth rate?
Yes.
What is the one factor that drives that?
Well, actually, there are two.
Okay.
The high-growth assumes that the highest, the highest ratio of births to kindergarten realized in the last five years is going to be the method that, that is chosen to project kindergarten. And the other factor is that the rate of change that occurred in the last year only is being used to project the rest of the enrollment.
Okay.
The lowest method says that the lowest relationship of zip code births to kindergarten realized in the last four years is then, is how we're going to project kindergarten enrollment. And rather than just take the rate of change that occurred in the last year, we're going to average the rate of change that's occurred in the last seven and use that to project.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
The school district growth projection that you gave us from what we are now, thirty-eight something to forty-two something, that was what percentage again? One point? You, you had a slide that had this, the future.
The population?
Yes.
Yes.
Total population.
You want the, you want the numbers or you want the percentage?
I'm just curious, is to, do any one of the student enrollment projections mirror that projected?
No.
Total growth?
No. They're a little, I think the high-growth is, is two, you know, I, the high-growth is two point two, and I can't remember what the other two are. I could easily find that and share it with Ms. Sink, and she can pass it on.
Anyone else? I just have one. How does this compare to the previous one we had done with you back three years ago?
Right.
Where do we sit as a district from, were we in the, I'm going to guess the medium growth model is where we would fit in if we were to look at today's numbers versus what you forecasted out three years ago? Did we fall in the low, medium growth or the high growth as a district? Do you follow?
I, I do, and I can't answer that question without looking at my data. I know that we, so for 2012, we thought you were going to have thirty more students than you had, and the next year, we thought you were going to have seventy fewer. But in terms of how did that, what methodology? I'll be happy to look and again, share it with Julie, and she can pass that on to you.
Yeah, there was this kind of a community misnumber that was out there for a while that we would peak and we were on a downward trend, and we, we still haven't seen that.
Right.
So, can, any further questions? Thank you. In addition, we have a demographic study task force coming up for some study of these numbers in January, two times in January. Community members, board members, and administrative staff are on that, in addition to teachers and principals, so. I'll move on to the attendance report. Janelle and Emily.
All right, good evening, Board, or Chairman Sorenson, Board members, and Dr. Gruber. Sorry. We just have a quick slideshow for you, just a little less data than what you just presented with. But it's good data, so you'll like it. This is Emily Chandler. She just came on board about a month and a half ago, so I very much appreciate you guys pushing her employment and getting her on board.
As do I.
So thank you. A little bit about our attendance data as a dean of students. What we do, I'll give you a snapshot of our day. We get a, we get a report run every morning of every student who has missed one or more classes during the day. And if a parent hasn't called out the student, or if a parent hasn't called the student out, we call down every single student on that list. So we see maybe, we can see upwards of 50 to 60 kids in a morning on a really good day for us. So we're really whipping through, why weren't you in class? Oh, it was the teacher, the teacher marked me absent? Okay, so then we get a clear slip to the teacher, and that, we like those, because those are, those are our honest kids, and we like that. But sometimes kids do miss class, or sometimes parents forget to call out. So we just want to make sure that we have the cleanest data that we can get to you. So this is based on the last three years. We do not have the first quarter data, but the trend is consistent with what we've seen the past two years. I know we presented on this last year in quarter three, and you can tell by the data in green, the data in green is from last year, and we really saw our attendance rise. Why? I think it's because of what the job that we're doing at the high school, don't you, Emily?
I think so too, and, and one of the conversations that we had in preparation for tonight was just how important that, that first contact is with a student when you start to notice that they're missing class, because it's one of the first indicators that there might be some other things going on, and it can quickly become a barrier to their learning and academic success and, and social growth and all of those things. So I think that it's a reflection of them physically being present in class, but overall also doing better and, and growing both academically and socially and all of the, the other ways, so.
So what is so awesome about this graph is that this is the number of students percentage who have attended class per quarter. I mean, we were at a 99 and a half, we're above 99 and a half percent of our high school students attending class. That means our kids are in the classroom, that means our kids are engaged, that means our kids like to go to school. If they didn't, they wouldn't be there. So I, I'm very proud of this data, and as we all should be. The next two graphs are just going to show you the total number of unexcused absences. So those are those absences that Emily and I, when we call down students, we really want to cut down. Our students know that they are going to get called in the next day if they do skip a class, and I do believe that the relationship that we form with students, that eye contact, that personal communication that we have every day with students, makes them accountable. I know a lot of students, when they come in and they did skip a class, hey, Mrs. Hingle, I, I was working on a paper, I did skip. What, what's my next step? So I think it's just creating that relationship with students, creating that relationship with parents too. Yeah, parents forget to call out. That's, that's okay. We'll, we'll get ahold of you, we send an email to parents, we send a reminder phone call that just got going too. So they're going to get contacted. And then this is how our unexcused absences, absences have decreased by year. And Mr. Lund, I don't know if you want to talk to this, but three years ago, they implemented having the deans back in the high school, and that's first where we started getting the data.
We dropped 51 percent that first year. We dropped 5 percent the next year. We've dropped our unexcused absences by 76 percent three years.
Excellent, excellent.
And we all know that with, with getting new data information systems like IQ, we are going to pair with, yes, these unexcused absences have decreased, where has our GPAs increased, what else has increased for the students? So it all, it all relates to one another. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Maybe a comment. I mean, this is basically your quick-response action team, right? And this is, definitely you can see the benefits to this quick-response team, because if they're not in school, they're not going to learn. So I think it's a great job that you guys have done, and a great plan on implementation when we started these positions a couple of years ago.
I want to add to what Emily said. It's not only increasing that relationship with the dean as your contact, but it's finding sources for those students who are missing class, which we can give to counselors or social workers, or from there.
Sure.
Congratulations. This is really wonderful data, really compelling. I remember when we initiated these positions, it was for two years. We wanted to see what impact having a dean of students would have on our student body, because we knew that our unexcused absences were high. We also knew they were getting bigger, and our high school was having more and more students, and we didn't want to lose those students that were going to get lost in the cracks. So it was, we tried it out for two years, and just this past year have said, no, this is something we really need to do, so that our students are held accountable, have the relationships that are needed. If they are having troubles, that we can identify those quickly before they become habits and patterns. So thank you for the good work that you're doing. Welcome, Emily, to the team. I know that we had just a little bit of time, and we had just one dean, and how did that go for you?
It was awesome. I got to know a lot.
Great answer.
Yes.
Thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fuller, we'll move on to the, actually, I'm sorry, we'll move on to the curriculum schedule changes by the middle school and high school administrators.
Good evening, Chair Sorenson, members of the board. From the middle school perspective, and just to have a couple of things to highlight, two areas really of changes, minimal changes. The first being, in our reading extension course, specifically at the sixth grade level, we're going to be making a change to better align with our RTI MTSS model of interventions coming forward, moving from elementary into the middle level. And we are going to make that with a focus in the reading area, and make that an everyday course. It's been an every-other-day course for those students who need that intervention, and we believe that we are going to be able to better meet their needs and get them up to the level that they need to be through that course. That's the first area. And then the second area is, as we move forward and continue as an Eastham district, and finding ways to reach our students in those areas, most notably in the elective areas, a couple of courses in our, two of our elective areas are changing. One in the health area, and introduction of a medical detectives' course that we think is really going to be an exciting course for our students, looking at the interest out there in the forensics science. That certainly is there, and students are very interested in it. Secondly, a, in our project Lead the Way, offerings a greens, building, green architecture course. And we, we too feel that that's going to be a course that our students are going to be excited to take and explore that particular area. So those are our highlighted changes for middle school. Any questions?
Any questions? Sure.
Will current staff be teaching? Do you have current staff teaching those classes?
Yes, yep. And in both the, in the, we, in the health area, it's going to be existing staff, because it's going to change, take a different course. It's a change of a course. We're eliminating one elective course and replacing it. And similarly, in the IT, so we assume that those staff will, that are currently teaching these other courses, will pick up these.
Thank you. Mr. Lund?
Good evening. And we just have a, excuse me, a couple changes with the high school curriculum proposed for next year. The one would be addition of a fabrication laboratory two class. We're in the process of fleshing that out. If you, we sent this course descriptions out ahead, but that's kind of going above and beyond what we have for fabrication laboratory one. It'll include setting up a business model. We hope to open part of Laker's store for some production. We also hope to receive projects from other classes, maybe even local businesses in that part of the design. We're still fleshing that out, because we're, you know, almost three-quarters of the way through FabLab one, but that's been a dream of ours for FabLab two. So that's the first one. Second one is an AP Biology. We don't have an advanced biology course. We have three instructors right now working on the AP Biology. We'll be presenting that to the college board this spring for certification. And then we will have a, a advanced section to all of our science classes. That'll round us out there. Hospitality management, we have Laker catering now that's, that's taught between our business and our fax department. Fax department will take that over, and our business department is going a little different direction with hospitality management. It was actually just, we're not going there, but this is a, a course offered in college, and I'm hoping within a couple of years, we can get an articulated college credit for this course. But this is looking more at the business end of food service and food management. And then the other courses, just I listed them in there, where we have Intro to Woods one, and we have two, but then we had cabinet making, and we had, we just cleaned up some course names, so students understood what we were doing. Woods one, two, three, four, metals, one, two, three. We had some kind of fancier names in there, and the kids were getting confused and taking them out of sequence. So John Marish came up and said, let's, let's clarify for the students and tell them exactly what it is. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to accept the curriculum and course changes for the middle school and high school?
Salute.
By Lee, second.
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I carry a seven zero.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be here for quite a while, because we had such a successful fall.
Should be just the opposite then.
Okay, so we put together this slideshow, and just wanted to highlight some of the records of each team, and then just to give you a description of a little bit what happened toward the end of the season for each team, so that everyone can see how well we did. It was one of our better falls, or one of our stronger falls in terms of Prior Lake High School athletics and activities. Overall, we had 800 participants in our fall sports teams, and then if you add on different activities that we also had, it was well over 1,000 kids, because some of those students overlap and also participate in sports and activities when they can. So super fall for us overall. We did start off the summer with our fee-pay registration, which was quite fun, and it took a lot of explaining and helping parents along. I had one parent that called me back probably four times in one day, and then at the end of the successfully registering her daughter, she said, you must be getting a lot of calls like this. And I was, on the side, I wanted to say, not this many. So it took a while for some of them to catch on, but winter then has proven that we're all catching on, and it's going really well. We're able to generate some great reports, and the online registration is working really well. So thanks for that. Mr. Roden is at the National AD Conference, so that's why I'm here, plus I love speaking in front of everybody. So starting off, adaptive soccer, this was unfortunately one of the first falls in, I think, seven years that they haven't gone on to the state competition. They lost their final game in the playoffs by one goal. Sounded like it was a great, a great event, and could have gone either way, so very exciting for them, just didn't end up the way they wanted it to. Football, again, we recognize them, they were a state competitive, competitive team this year. They went nine and two, eight and one in the regular season, had fantastic support from our student section, led by some of our super fans. We had pep band and several student fan buses that went to the final game of the section, where we ended up not beating Maple Grove, but again, a game that could have gone either way. Super exciting finish for our football team. The boys soccer team, again, it's going to get repetitive. Every team did really well. They finished up as conference champion, did great, did a great job. They made it to the section semifinal game by winning the quarterfinal game in penalty kicks. So that was a super exciting finish for all the fans that were there watching that. So, and then they ended up losing to Bloomington-Jefferson, three to two in overtime. So that was very exciting as well. Moving on to girls soccer, they had a great season as well. You can see that their record was 13, five, and one, yet they finished fifth in the SSC. The SSC is one of the strongest competition groups that we have in terms of girls soccer, for sure, this fall. And they went on to have a fantastic season competing in the section finals at Eden Prairie, where Eden Prairie seems to have our number, and we probably outshot them three goals, three times as many goals to their number of goals. They unfortunately converted on one goal, and it was like one of those, ah, you know, we wish it could be us. So that was super exciting. They will, I will say, had quite the fan support, especially from a standout parent group, and got to see some exciting themes and a lot of support shown for the girls, so I know they felt very supported out there. We were very proud of these teams. In tennis, as you heard, four-time champions for their section, and went on to place at state, second place this year. Again, in tennis, Edina is like a tennis champion factory. They are just able to produce those top teams year after year after year. But we compete well against them, we had some close matches there, but we just, they came out on top on all those key matches, so did well. Swimming and diving, the girls were section champs. They were section champs last year. I don't know that it was expected for them to be section champs this year. They were super excited when they won this season, and went on to compete at state. And I forgot to mention, for many of these sports, their coaches were selected as section coach of the year by their colleagues. And then for Chris Snyder for tennis, she was selected as state coach of the year for the double A. So fantastic job by her over and over. Cross-country girls, we had two qualifiers that we recognized earlier. I would say that in terms of their sport, they are in kind of a rebuilding mode. They have a lot of youth runners, they had a lot of middle schoolers out this year who did well, and some younger athletes that really rose to the occasion, having no experience competing at the varsity level and then really turning it on. So they did a great job, and I know they're excited to get back out there next season. Our cross-country boys, for those of you that were here, heard that they finished their best finish. They were first in section, and that's the first time since 1993. It was an exciting finish, again, at the section finals. All of the SSC ADs that are part of that tend to stand near the finish line, and kind of travel together and watch different parts of the race. And as we got to the finish line, our, our boys, for those of you that don't know, their method in the race is to start near the back and make their way forward. So as you watch different parts of the race, it looks like, oh no, how are we going to do, you know, and they're barely at the middle of the pack as you get there. But then at the end, our top two runners are always near the front, and again, they were. And then all of a sudden, you know, down the hill comes another Prior Lake runner, another Prior Lake runner, oh my gosh, another one. And then all of a sudden, we're like, we won, I think we won, you know? And you don't know until they give all the final results, but it was very exciting for their team and for everybody watching as well. John was also selected section coach of the year. The volleyball team did very well, 27 and three was their record. They were first in their conference, and their season, I know they had many, many wins, you know, kept winning and winning. I think as that happened, the expectations rose throughout the season, and their fan support was outstanding. That is one of the groups that you'll notice, the board decision to allow students to be admitted without a charge for some of the home events. That really paid off for volleyball especially. You'll see that those numbers really rose. You'll see that those numbers really rose in terms of attendance. I know their finish wasn't what they hoped for. Chaska kinda took it to us there at the end. They have the experience of being in that game multiple times, and that was our first time in that game. So I know the attitude is, we'll be back for the volleyball. Looking ahead at the numbers in other areas, the activities for the Fall Musical. The group performed "Once Upon a Mattress," and Tom Hassig and Dave Tuma did a fantastic job in terms of directing it. And if all of you were able to get to it, the set was pretty impressive as well. They did a fantastic job there. We're still getting the numbers for the tickets that were sold as reserved seats, so we don't have all of the data gathered yet. But we know that it was very similar to last year's numbers in terms of attendance for each of those evenings and the matinee on Sunday. The band numbers are up there as well, indicating that things are still very strong in our arts program. We did, the choir numbers got cut off, so those aren't up there. But they're, the choir numbers, again, are very similar to past years. And we're seeing a lot of great concerts throughout the fall. They've already started happening. I know tonight was the 9th grade band and the 8th grade band performing at the high school. And they were warming up as I was exiting that building. A couple other activities that we had go on this fall. Mountain biking was in its second year. They had a fourth-place finish out of eight Division I teams. They are in the biggest school division now, and so I think they were pretty happy with their finish, it sounded like. They increased their racers, and they also added the middle school level this year. So they just feel like that program is really growing, and they were pretty happy with where some of their competitors placed throughout the season. They aren't losing very many seniors, so again, they'll be back and improving as well. Our bowling team has 16 members. There's one graduating, a strong bowler that has probably made about 215 strikes, no, 115 strikes out of 218 frames during the season. So, pretty competitive bowler out there. I'm not very knowledgeable about the bowling, but I know that's pretty darn good when I see the percentages written out for their teams. So hopefully, they'll have some parent support. The parents have been really the ones helping generate the support in that program, and so hopefully, some of the younger bowlers, their parents will step up and help lead the way like the James family have done. This fall, again, we hosted intermural ping pong and expanded the involvement there. We led that program last year, and we had quite a few seniors that were on the team, and they were super excited about it. So I was a little nervous how many people would come out this year. And all the people that were younger participants last year returned, and then they brought more people with them. So we had quite a turnout. And we've just been doing our usual Monday nights and competing. And then we actually got invited to go play at Harding High School about two weeks ago because that was one of the teams we beat last year at the state tournament. And he invited us over there. So I took this new group of students, and we walked in, and all of a sudden, you know, all the boys were super nervous, because you walk in and it's pretty intimidating. There's a bunch of tables set up, and everybody looks ready to play, and pretty talented. And after they did the first round, a couple of them would come back over to our side, and they were like secretly saying, you know, "I won." You know, they were all excited that they won, and it ended up being a great competition night, and everybody had fun. So they plan to go again to this year's state tournament. It'll be all different players except for maybe one. So they're super excited about that. And then intermural basketball started tonight for the 9th and 10th graders. That's where I was right before this, helping get them going. And Mr. Olson is back helping to co-coordinate that. So I'm excited about that because he can just about build any program on the computer that can calculate schedules and points and statistics, so I don't have to worry about any of that. What we have here is the attendance information for our home events this fall. We have last year's numbers as well as this fall's numbers. It's pretty steady overall in terms of most of the student information, for example, for soccer and swimming. We were hoping soccer would go up a little with that admitting, the students were free. I don't know if it was some of those bad weather nights that kept people inside at volleyball or not there. But overall, we saw an increase in terms of volleyball, the students attending, and definitely in terms of the adults attending certain events. For football, our numbers were up in both areas. The weather was a good factor this year. We didn't have too many games that were super cold. And then we did host some additional games there at the end for other schools, and everything seemed to go really smooth. Every team that came to our field, of course, was super impressed with our facilities, and hosting events is definitely something that we want to do in the future, just continue to have as many games as we can. And we have a great crew that helped work it out as well. Each fall, we also survey the parents and students in terms of the performance of our coaches. Mr. Rodine does an excellent job of sitting down with each coach, usually preseason, and then again postseason. And what we did this fall was we got all of our coaches together for a fall meeting. And we had very high attendance at that for the fall and winter and spring coaches. And we talked about some of the things we're stressing in terms of the why we play, some of the questions that are asked on the survey as well, and the responses that you see in front of you. For example, honoring the game. The first percentile in terms of obeyed the rules, the first percentile is the parent response, and then the second percentile number is the student response. So we formed that all into one page so that you could see how that played out. Overall, we have a lot of positive comments from the surveys. And again, Mr. Rodine sits down with each head coach and goes through the information from the surveys, both student surveys and parent surveys, in his postseason meeting to review some of that information and to analyze it with them moving forward. These are some of the things that we stress in meeting with our coaches, emphasizing effort, rebounding from mistakes, you know, filling your positive emotional tank, those types of things. And then the final question, would you like to have your student have this coach again? Parent responses and student responses, overall positive. There certainly is room for improvement. We would like those numbers to be 80% or better in all categories in terms of returning to that person. So that is, again, something that we'll look at and ways we can improve those situations based on feedback. The Challenge Cup for this school year, we are currently 19th out of 96 schools. Last year at this time, we were 15th out of 96 schools. You can see at the bottom how we are earning our points so far from the fall. And obviously, we hope to keep moving forward in that race, and we'll see how winter sports turn out. Overall, that is our presentation, and we just want to thank you for your support with athletics and activities. And any questions that I can answer, I will.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Move on to the 2015-16 school calendar. Mr. Humboldt.
Good evening, Chair Sorensen, members of the board, Dr. Grover. In your board packet is a proposed 2015-16 school calendar. We're seeking board approval this evening. Just as a quick overview, this is a calendar very similar to the current 2014-15 school year. Historically, this is a process of developing the calendar, comes through meet and confer. And we do that by a subcommittee, where the subcommittee drafts the calendar, brings it back to meet and confer for review, and then from there, sent out to the buildings for review. And so, the calendar that we have before you has gone through the meet and confer process several times. We started working on this calendar last spring, and through some input, feedback, and we have a draft here for you this evening, and we're seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the calendar?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
By Dan. Any questions about the calendar? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
I have a comment.
Sure.
That I know that many of the families were happy with where spring break landed this year in the middle of the month of March, and so I believe they will be happy again with next year. And so I think next year, we go back to kind of the regular, starting school right after Labor Day, right? So hopefully, while I won't be the one that will get the chance to vote on it in the future, I really hope that that becomes the norm. And I think that's at least what I've heard from the community is, it's nice to know that it's gonna be a given week each year, because even though, I know we try to get this out well in advance, I know even this year, it's probably a little bit later than some of the years, right? So I think families do appreciate knowing that it's gonna be the second week or the third week so that, you know, they can plan accordingly, so.
That seems to be a consistent point of feedback that we get, is that spring break in March. So we do try, we do have that discussion every time.
So I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Great to see the assessment days again. When I went to the elementaries, that's one thing they said they were very, very happy about was the early assessment days.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the certification, the final levy.
This is your opportunity as a board to approve the levy certification at the 1.6%.
Do I have a motion to accept the certification as briefed earlier tonight?
Go main.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Lee. Any comments or questions? Mike?
You know, I just would like to, you know, comment. Obviously, during the open forum, it's not the time for us to bring that up, but, you know, I will commend the entire board, and I believe there's no reason to think that as we move forward, the mindset of really trying to keep the levy that we ask our community to pay as flat as possible. I know that that's been the approach that we've taken for many years, and I believe that it'll continue to be sort of the mindset that we have. And really, you know, it's unfortunate to hear the individual circumstances that, you know, that people do feel, and I do feel, you know, I do feel compassion for folks that find themselves in that situation. But across the board, I really do think that we're doing the right thing, both for the kids, which are obviously our first concern, and also for the taxpayers who do, you know, provide us with those resources for us to be able to deliver the services that the district is expected to provide. And so I know that oftentimes, what's happening is it's out of the control of really this board, and even the individuals that are affected. So I do think that, you know, that it's unfortunate that that does happen, but I feel very confident that really we're doing the right things and are really trying to be as wise and value every single dollar that this district has. And I think we've done a wonderful job for many years, and I expect that that'll continue to be the case.
Any other comments? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you. On to the budget approval.
I just want to review a little bit about the enrollment and talk about our final budget. We have discussed these items before, and so the most of this is a review. We originally budgeted our enrollment for 74, 69, and we did increase that because of our student population. And so we are looking at a total new budgeted enrollment for this at 75, 20. As a review, our elementary class sizes, as you can see by grade level, our average is 23.17, and that's dropped from last year at 24.50.
Does that include the addition tonight?
Addition?
The kindergarten addition?
No.
Okay, so we'll go even or lower?
We could go lower then.
Right. Increase for revenue, we're increasing the basic formula, $670,000 because of the additional students that we have. And then we have an increase in our special education funding. So our total overall increase in revenues is a little over $800,000. As we've worked through the, from the original preliminary budget in May, actually, this last year, until now, the board has approved some additional expenditures, two additional routes for transportation. As you remember, that was for Fishpoint Road and that new crossing, the hazardous highway. And then .6 FTE at the middle school. We did increase our substitution teacher rate, a special ed FTE of 1.5. And we also had a computer buyout for the 900 computers that we had leased two years, three years ago, for a total of $485,000, almost $486. And then the board also approved the one-to-one technology. So we have iPads in grades 8, 10, 11, and 12, and also hiring some field techs in April to deploy those throughout the summer, setting that all up and getting them ready to go for the next school year at a cost of $2.8 million. At the same time, we have some additional capital expenditures that the board has approved for projects. Those projects, we have talked about roofing at the high school and some other various carpeting and those types of things. So for a total of $2.6 million. So those expenditure placements, we have undesignated at almost $516,000, assigned for technology. We're spending down those fund balances that we have out there. That's $500,000. We're also spending down the fund balance for the innovation, innovative programming of $500,000. We're using $200,000 of the fund balance in cash flow. Deferred maintenance, we are spending down the fund balance in that area as well, and utilizing our current revenue in there of $580,000, and then spending down our fund balance of capital expenditures of a little over $2 million. So we have a total expenditures of $4.3 million. Now, I know that it sounds like a lot of money. However, we did have fund balances in those areas to accommodate these one-time expenditures. So as we go through this budget update, you can see that our unassigned operating is going down slightly, but that's a planned decline there. And also, as you go through, you can see the assigned technology is being spent down, the assigned for innovation, innovative programming. So those areas are being spent down, but those are one-time expenditures, and so therefore that we don't have that reoccurring expense. And then the same thing happens with the deferred maintenance, number 7, under restricted, and also in operating capital, number 9. And so total overall, if you look at our total general fund at the very bottom, and I know it's difficult to see on here, but we were just almost at $13 million of a fund balance. We are now ending up at a little over $8.2 million as a fund balance. The fund balance policy for the district is between 8 and 12%, and this puts us just at that 10%, so right smack dab in the middle of that. So I'm very comfortable with those numbers, and I feel very comfortable with our total overall budget for the general fund. We also have some changes in our other funds. In Fund 2 for food service, we had some increased expenditures due to additional staffing for breakfast. You may see that one changed throughout the rest of this year as we move forward also. Change in Fund 4, community education, we have some programming changing in all areas, so we have adjusted our budget in there. Construction fund, our estimated fund balance at the end of June was a little bit higher than we thought, just because of how our expenditures and where we were at at June 30 of last year. And so that's just simply due to that project, the projects being completed and when they were completed. Our debt service fund, we have allocated the expenditure. We refunded our 2005 bonds two years ago, and so that final escrow payment is due, and so we made sure that that was showing on the base. In Fund 20, this is our health and dental, self-insured health and dental fund. We do have some increases here, simply due because we have additional staffing increases and some additions there. And then our OPEV allocation for Fund 25 is updated to reflect our current retirees. So the other funds, as you can see, are showing here in this budget, and they are all showing... So the other funds, as you can see, are showing here in this budget and they are all showing positive fund balance at the end of the year. Any questions concerning the budget?
Any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the final budget approval?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Stacy, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Thank you. Just a quick side note here, organizational meeting discussion, we have an organizational meeting on January twelfth at six-thirty PM. We are working on board assignments for buildings and committees. If you have any last-minute requests, I know we've requested this before, but please make us aware of that. Move on to our policy.
Big.
I'm not going to read the whole list. You guys have been busy.
We have.
Lee's leaving, so you had to clean the whole thing up.
Well, we set a goal and it took thirteen years to get there, but.
You appreciate it. We have the first reading on a few policies here. I'm not going to read through them. Anyone have any comments about any of the policies in the first reading? Seeing none, we'll see those back. Did you have any comments?
No, only that for the most part, we've, other than ones we've been talking about, they are really cleaned up and put in MSBA format and given the correct numbering, et cetera. So those are the main changes, I believe.
Okay. And then for the second final reading, we have a very large amount of additional ones. Any questions or comments about any of those? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the policies for the second final reading?
So moved.
By Lee, second?
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have some policies to rescind, three policies listed here.
They don't really exist in MSBA. They're kind of our own made up ones.
Okay.
They're out of date.
They're out of date, okay. Do I have a motion to?
Or they're included somewhere else.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to rescind those three policies?
So moved.
By Lee, second?
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Ministries report, Sue Ann.
Yes, I'm happy to report that our school board meetings are now back on cable channel seventeen. We had a brief interlude there where we weren't being, recording our school board meetings, but we are back, we have that presence, both in Prior Lake and in Savage. So school board meetings are taped and run throughout the week on our channel along with news and events, but the public can also continue to find the archived school board meetings on our website, so both of those. In addition, our annual report is now available online at our website and has been emailed to parents. This is posted as a news item on our website and contains not only our financial picture as a district, but also information about our schools, e-stem, curriculum, technology, test scores, our latest survey, and more. So please check it out if you haven't already. It's compiling a lot of different efforts into one concise report.
Thank you. Ministries reports? None. Okay, student council reports?
All right, so we, after the last meeting, really, right after it, we decided that we were going to cancel the Sadie's Dance for this year. So instead, we decided to focus on our committee goals and just different things that we could do as a council to make ourselves better and the school better. And so we've been trying to find ways to use some of our money to pay for things that the students need or like any teachers would need. So we're coming up with grant, a grant system and we're just trying to figure out, there's things like hand dryers that students would like or just things that would make things a little bit better for the students, I guess, or things that they just like to complain about that we have the money to take care of. So I mean, just, we're just talking about ways that we could use some of that money. And we're also working on a lot of service projects right now. We just finished up this whole letters to, letters from Santa deal where we, where parents will send us information about things that their kids have done in the past year and.
Don't spill the beans.
Yeah, I know, we're just helping out Santa.
We're helping out Santa, okay.
Be in Santa's hands. So we're just, yeah.
You're on cable channel now.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Just, yeah, we're all.
Yep, yep. So we're also working on some bell ringing stuff and we're doing some, we're going to do a caroling for Cans project. And we're also working on our basketball concessions right now. We just started that up and that's going really well, too. So that's where we are right now.
Good, thank you. Internal board reports, committees? Lee, I heard you had your last hurrah at the C.
Scale.
Or scale.
Scale, yes.
How was that?
It was fine.
Good.
Having been on that committee for a really long time, it'll, it'll be interesting going forward. But we talked about the legislative platform and they agreed to put education in one of their top priorities. So we do have a presence with scale.
Excellent. Any other committees? Feature events, we have fall, actually, winter, I'm sorry, Christmas, winter break now from December twenty-second through January second. January sixth, we resume school. We have the organizational meeting at six-thirty on January twelfth, followed by the regular board meeting, January twelfth at seven PM. And then we have the MSBA Annual Leadership Conference for school board members. I know you let Martha know if you can attend, and that is January fifteenth through the And with that, one quick comment, Lee, thank you for your service. We had a little party for you tonight, but again, thank you so much for your service over the last few years, many years, I guess I should say. You've been a leader to this board. I thank you, you've been a leader to me and I think to everyone here, so thank you with that. Mike, thanks for coming back for another stint here. We missed you and so we brought you back. But again, thank you very much for your service. You've done a great deal for the community and we appreciate that, so. Any of the board members have any comments about our two members and if some people spoke? Sue Ann?
I have really, truly appreciated both of these people and the voices, the commitment they've brought to students, their continual wanting to bring it back to making sure that students today benefit by the decisions that they're making, and we've been able to do that. Their leadership has really been instrumental in the work that we've been able to accomplish over at least the past seven years that I've been here. And I have count on them for their wisdom, for their guidance, and also just for their sound reasoning on why we do, make the decisions we make. So I so appreciate the commitment of time and talent to this school board. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Lee.
I think I'd just say, as a new school board member four years ago, I think coming in and having these two here was really helpful for me to learn the ropes and I think it's been a really good representation, their voices for the community, and they've done a great job of always keeping the kids first, so thank you.
I echo Stacy saying thank you to both of you for your insight. Thank you.
Well, I just, you know, and Lee, you know, I didn't have the chance to say it earlier, but thirteen years, that's pretty remarkable and I know that, you know, there's been a lot of wonderful things, so. And it was a pleasure to come back for the last eighteen, eighteen months. And as I said, at that time, when I departed the first time two years ago, it's easier to do it when you know that the district's being left in very capable hands, both at the board level and the administrative and the staff level. And I think that's the best thing as a departing board member, and I know when I spoke with Dan the first time that he left, that that was something that as you leave, you want to make sure that it's going to continue on in the right direction. And so again, the second time that I leave, it's the same way. So I look forward to the good things and I know that the two new board members that'll be coming on, they bring the same passion and I think the desire to do wonderful things, so I'm very, very confident knowing that things are going to continue in a very positive direction.
So with that, we have your plaque you had returned to us, you can take that.
Yeah, there you go.
And thank you for keeping that, if you want to keep it handy, we may need it at some point, but. And Lee, yours is up there for the taking.
Thank you.
Martha said you have to leave the clear plaque.
The clear. I know Martha.
No, we can take that clear plaque. You can take the clear one now.
That's a step up.
That's a step up.
No.
Blab is.
You're good. You're good.
So with that, Lee, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
I will make that motion.
And Mike, a second?
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Good night.